...two thousand and thirteen, this is actually first we're going to start off with a special meeting with the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 5th, two thousand and thirteen to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. And just to set the stage, as has been advertised, we're having a special public meeting now, and this is for the purpose of forwarding a teaching staff member an informal appearance before the board with regard to the non-renewal of the teaching staff member's employment contract as an athletic coach. We will not take action during this special meeting. And then, at the close of this, we'll close the, once we finish this, we'll close the meeting, close the special meeting, and then we'll reinstate the previously advertised regular meeting, which we're targeting at seven thirty, we may be a little bit later to accommodate for a full hour for this meeting. So, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Mr. Semenfata?
Here.
Mr. Gillet?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Leg?
Mr. Paulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the purposes of the hearing, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Vic Lapira, who is one of the board's attorneys. Mr. Lapira?
Thank you. So, just to give you some background in terms of the informal appearance that we're providing to the athletic coach here today, normally these informal appearances are held in closed executive session unless, of course, the coach has chosen to, or the teacher in this case, has chosen to waive his or her privacy rights, which Mr. Rosenbloom has done here. Therefore, it will be held in public session. The format will be that the superintendent of schools will give a very brief overview as to his reasons, as to why he chose not to renew Mr. Rosenbloom as the coach. After that, Mr. Rosenbloom and/or his representative will have an opportunity to address the board. It's not an adversarial proceeding, there's not a question and answer period. The purpose is to allow Mr. Rosenbloom and anyone he wishes to call as a witness provide information as to why they believe Mr. Rosenbloom should be re-employed as an athletic coach in this district, notwithstanding the superintendent's recommendation. Once Mr. Rosenbloom has had his opportunity to provide that information, as well as any witnesses he wishes to call, keeping in mind that it will be approximately forty-five minutes for his portion of this informal appearance, then, at that point in time, the board will close the informal appearance. When it goes into its next meeting following this meeting during the personnel agenda, if any board member chooses to make a motion to rehire Mr. Rosenbloom, and if the motion is seconded, then there will be a vote. If there is no motion, then Mr. Rosenbloom will not be rehired as an athletic coach. All right? So, at this point in time, Dr. Schiff will provide his brief overview, and then Mr. Rosenbloom and/or his representative will then be able to provide their reasons as to why they believe he should be re-employed.
Thank you, Mr. Lapira. Good evening. Mr. Rosenbloom was issued a statement of reasons on November twentieth, which document the performance categories in his two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen annual performance review that were unsatisfactory and in need of improvement. The deficient performance categories include staff organization, practice organization, enhancement and promotion of the athletic program, and demonstrating integrity. In total, Mr. Rosenbloom received five less than satisfactory ratings out of the fourteen performance areas evaluated. The statement of reasons also identified a pattern of insubordination, unprofessionalism, and issues of not being truthful with his immediate supervisor, which substantiated my decision to non-renew. Since that decision, I have listened carefully to the comments of both current and former Hillsborough Middle School softball players and parents. I have read each email and correspondence received by the board in support of Mr. Rosenbloom. It is clear to me that Mr. Rosenbloom has had a positive impact on many of his athletes and their families. It is important, however, that we find coaches who inspire their athletes and work well with administration. Many of our coaches across the district, from middle school to high school, do tremendous work with our students and work collaboratively with administration. We should expect no less.
Now, Mr. Rosenbloom or his representative may address the board.
Dr. Schiff, thank you very much for your review of what has occurred. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. For those of you here who do not know me, please allow me to introduce myself and let you to get to know me a little bit. I began my teaching career in Hillsborough in two thousand. Before that, I worked as an assistant athletic trainer for two years with the New York Jets, then for a year at Princeton University. I was a certified athletic trainer for the Franklin Township Public Schools. I was an adjunct professor at the College of New Jersey. I've been teaching and served as a part-time athletic trainer here in Hillsborough, and I've coached middle school softball for nine years. This is my fourteenth year in the Hillsborough District. I've earned two master's degrees during my career, one in kinesiology from Indiana University, and one in educational administration from Rider University. In two thousand and eleven, I was selected by Magic ninety-eight point three to be one of their teachers who make magic. And lastly, I was a recipient of this year's two thousand and thirteen Coordinator of the Year Award for my work with the American Heart Association. This is a national award that I just received, and it did go out to everybody. These last few months have been very stressful and a difficult time for me. I stand before you tonight feeling a variety of emotions. First off, being confused would be an understatement. I'm confused, as stated in my rebuttal, why I would be relieved of my coaching duties. It's my understanding, after reading my end of season evaluation and reasons for non-renewal, that my coaching policies and procedures, as well as my character and integrity, are in question. Over the last eight years, under the direction of administration, Mr. Bob Delpree, Dr. Joe Tribolski, Mr. Rich Burton, and Mr. John Chicarone, my philosophies and objectives have never once been called into question. My working with these individuals has never once been called into question. My players have always been held to the utmost standards, both on and off the field. You see, the name on the front of that jersey means a whole lot more than the name on the back of that jersey. Upon conclusion of my speech tonight, and with the words of those here helping to support me, I hope that you'll see how the positives far outweigh the negatives, and I hope we'll be able to move forward from here, for myself, as well as the program. This past year, there was a new athletic director in charge, Mr. Patrick Scarpello. The season began without, please let me repeat to you, without Mr. Scarpello calling for the customary preseason coaches' meeting. I have an email from him here in Exhibit A dated on October twenty-eighth, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, stating that he would not be having a preseason coaches' meeting. I'd be more than happy to share this with you at the end. Past practice has always been to have a preseason coaches' meeting. Even more ironic is in the fall, as well as the winter, the coaching staffs had a preseason coaches' meeting. Preseason meetings were always held and conducted in order to have dialogue as to what's expected of me, and for me to ask the athletic director what would be expected of him. That would be the appropriate time to review and discuss any of my philosophies or objectives. But more importantly, this would have allowed Mr. Scarpello the opportunity to inform me of his policies and procedures. Even after I presented my spring sports informational packet to Mr. Scarpello and the parents at my meet-the-coaches night on March twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, there was still no discussion nor controversy of any kind under any of its contents. Unfortunately, in a meeting with Dr. Tribolski and Mr. Scarpello, they both told me in that meeting that they don't normally read things that come across their desk. Everything called into question had transpired beginning midway through the softball season. On April fifth, I began receiving emails from Mr. Scarpello, questioning me on the procedures for parent pickup, and thus accusing me of leaving my girls unsupervised. I think right now I'd like to bring up Ms. Dolly Solanki and Mr. Juan Prito. They have a few comments they'd like to share at this time. Ms. Solanki, Mr. Prito.
My name is Dolly Solanki. My daughter Nikita played softball last year, and it was a pleasure to have Mr. Rosenbloom as Nikita's coach. She had a pleasure time playing softball in past season, and several nights, especially Monday nights, I was running late to pick up Nikita due to heavy traffic coming from long distance, and Nikita is the last one waiting for me to be picked up. And every single night that I came late, and I have seen Mr. Rosenbloom and Nikita sitting outside, waiting for me to come, and it could be like twenty minutes late, could be fifteen minutes late, and he was always there. And every single time, I kind of apologized to him that he had to stay for me, he has family, but several nights that happened, and in that case, that, you know, I'm always thankful that he was there, and then Nikita was always attended by him. So, that's all I wanted to say to the staff. Thank you.
I'm Juan Prito, One Irving Road. I spoke to you the last time we had one of our open meetings. Again, just to reiterate what I've said before, Mr. Rosenbloom has been, to me and to my daughter and to our family, an inspiration. As I mentioned to you, I've been in coaching for many years. I've involved with professional athletics as part of the Met's clinical staff, as a psychologist, and to me, I can only speak of great honor to have had Mr. Rosenbloom as a coach for my daughter. As a result of my flexibility, I'm able to spend a lot of time with my daughter during her season. I go to practices, I drop her off, I pick her up, depending on what needs to be done. I probably picked up my daughter every single time except two during the whole season. And not once did I ever see her unsupervised, or anyone else from the team unsupervised. There was always parents there, also, there was never a girl outside by herself, not once during all the times that I was there, both in front of the school where the initial pickup used to be, and then later on, the pickups were transferred to the back of the school. So, either way, I never saw any discrepancies. The only thing I ever saw was in early April, as I was sitting there waiting to pick up my daughter, there were two boys outside. I think they were from the lacrosse team, and the athletic director, at that moment, was coming into the school and asked the boys, "Where's your coach? How come you're not being supervised?" And then shortly after that, I received the email to have my daughter picked up in the back of the school, and that there was an issue around the pickups of the children and lack of supervision. But again, from, in regards to the softball team, not once did I ever experience any girls being unsupervised. I said this in the last meeting as well, so I hope you take that into consideration. As I'm thinking through the whole process, it seems strange to me that there's such great level of support for Coach Rosenbloom, meeting after meeting. I mean, I don't see the other side of the agenda of the school coming in to support their decision of why he should be relieved. I think, to me, it seems subjective. It may seem almost as if it's someone who's new into the system abusing his or her authority. And to me, it doesn't make sense when you have such a great deal of support. I play nothing in this. My daughter is out of middle school, she will not be coached by Coach Rosenbloom again. I'm here just to reiterate how important he has been to my daughter, to us, and to all the girls that coach under him. So, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Solanki. Thank you, Mr. Prito. Subsequent dialogue and emails commented on my alternate plans for rainy day practice, as well as criticizing my methods for obtaining academic progress reports electronically. Dr. Schiff, your technology involvement in this district is one that should be commended. Please let me tell you, though, I embraced your technology initiative and reached out to every one of my players' teachers via email, asking them to notify me immediately with any behavior or academic concerns about my girls. Classroom teachers not only were appreciative of this method, they were alleviated the need to handwrite a report in the middle of class infringed upon instructional time. The most common positive feedback I received from my colleagues was, does this method remove any awkwardness that occurs when a teacher wants to write a note to the coach but then feels uncomfortable handing that paper directly back to the student as they return to their desk to continue with the lesson? However, Dr. Schiff, Mr. Scarpello said the use of technology in this situation, as well as many others, was unacceptable, and insisted that I continue to use the paper In any case, the negative correspondence continued. Every other day, there was something. Mr. Scarpello even contacted me to say, and I apologize for having a hard time saying this, he even contacted me to say that I should refrain from using the restroom during practices. Let me repeat, he instructed a grown man to refrain from using the restroom if he needs to during practices, even though my assistant coach, Larissa McCann, a certified science teacher in our building, would still be there supervising the girls for that brief, two-minute period I might need to use the restroom. Again, I have an email here from Mr. Scarpello stating that I should not use the restroom. If you'd like to see it after the meeting, I'd be more happy to share it with you. Despite, though, my personal opinion, Dr. Schiff, you had mentioned that maybe it's not all the other things that you mentioned, you said that it is not being able to work with supervisors. I appreciate you acknowledging that I do a very good job. Thank you very much. But despite my personal opinion, I adhered to what was asked of me. In fact, on April thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, a meeting was held in response to all of the back-and-forth dialogue, and Dr. Tribolski documented on what transpired, stating, and I quote Dr. Tribolski's words, "Going forward, based on our clarifying discussions at this meeting, we all agreed these matters were now resolved." Again, I have that memo here stating that from Dr. Tribolski. I'd be more than happy to share with you all afterwards. What confused me was, by definition, resolve means concluded, brought to an end, done, which is why I was confused to find these readdressed in my end-of-season formal evaluations. Mr. Blevins is here tonight. Mr. Blevins, could you stand up, please, and confirm for me that this, in your mind, all items were resolved regarding that memo?
At that meeting.
Thank you. It also was very surprising how Principal Dr. Tribolski can send glowing emails to parents about me. Please allow me to share with you an excerpt from an email from Dr. Tribolski to a parent, where he writes, "I must share that Mr. Rosenbloom is one of the most beloved coaches of my staff. Year after year, I watch the girls on the team bond and have so much fun when they play and afterwards. At the year-end banquets, in the softball team's girls that always share so many wonderful stories of how much they love him as their coach and the fun they have all year. I've got a stack of letters from his softball kids, past and present players, from a couple of years ago who nominated him for Teacher of the Year." I'd be more than happy to share that with you as well. So, seeing as Dr. Tribolski can send glowing emails to parents about me, stand up and speak to audiences at my softball banquet about my performance and my character, and then ultimately support Mr. Scarpello's evaluation, which challenges my overall character and integrity, haven't my years of service and dedication to this program stood for anything? Don't parent letters, emails, received long before any of this, speak volumes about me and my coaching? Aren't you scratching your heads right now, confused as I am? I'm wondering, where is all this coming from? Mr. Scarpello, who knew me for less than ten months and observed my program for less than one month, formulated such negative opinions towards the program. I ask you why? All I know is, as the school year ended, Mr. Scarpello was suddenly leaving to take another job in another district, and Dr. Tribolski told Mr. Blevins, our union president, that we should meet in September to discuss this matter. Mr. Blevins, could you please stand again and confirm for me that this is what occurred?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, can you also confirm your dialogue with Mr. Whitlock on October twenty-eighth, stating that Mr. Whitlock had dialogue with Dr. Tribolski in June, and that Mr. Whitlock informed you that a final decision had already been made?
I can't. Just have that.
I have an email from you here. If you'd like to see that, I can share that with you, too. Then, I ask you to the board, why would Dr. Tribolski tell Mr. Blevins we'll meet in September if he told Mr. Whitlock this decision was done in June? Next, "I'm feeling honored, humbled, and blessed in that tonight and over the last few weeks, there's been an outpouring of support from former players and parents in this community. Imagine, to my surprise, finding out on a Monday morning that I supposedly resigned from the position and the board was to vote on my successor later that night. Whatever happened to my opportunity in September to meet regarding my evaluation? The whole situation seemed very underhanded and hurtful. If it were not for that handful of players and parents who spoke on my behalf that night, October twenty-eighth, I probably would not be here tonight defending myself. Then again, I shouldn't have to defend myself. My character and integrity speak for themselves. My softball program has never been about wins and losses. However, last year in the first inaugural year of the Central Jersey Junior Softball League, my team won the championship. We even were honored with a proclamation of the mayor of your town. But yet, my character and integrity are being called into question. As for character and integrity, please allow me to explain to you what happened on that final championship game. Those of you who may not know, we actually were playing a school called JP Case. We were in the last inning. The score, we were winning by two runs, something I've always done in all my years coaching here. The girls that played for me for two years, they deserve the respect and honor for what they've done on that field. So, in the last inning, I wait for there to be one out, and I call timeout, and I take all of those girls to the pitcher's mound, and then I turn to my fans and their parents and say, "These young ladies' combined record over the last two years is thirty-two and one. They deserve the right to walk off this field to a round of applause," at which they do. What you don't understand is, we were only winning by two runs. There was a runner on first and a runner on third with one out. Their best hitter was coming up. My young lady, who does not pitch for me normally, I stood next to her on the bench, she had tears in her eyes, and said, "Coach, you can't do this. You can't do this." And I said, "Julia, I can, because I believe in you, and you will do a good job." We went out and won the game, and I can say this to you, my parents, they thought I was crazy. I'm not crazy. I do what's in the best interest for this district and these girls and this program. It's not about me. When anybody ever talks to me about wins and losses, I turn quickly to say, "It's not about wins and losses. It doesn't matter that your record is a hundred and thirty and nine. That doesn't make young women. What makes young women is the ones that go on to Brown, Rice, Penn State, Albany, and still want to talk to their middle school coach." And as those players that I mentioned to you walked off the field in that final game, Ms. Susan Exteem, the vice principal of our building, in front of my parents, said, "That cannot be an easy thing to do, but that's the right thing to do." Yet, my character and integrity are being questioned. No, it has always been about what I thought was right for Hillsborough Middle School, for Hillsborough Township, the athletic program, and those girls that have played before me. Look around the room tonight at the people here who continue to support me, whether it's in person or through phone calls or emails. This support is a direct reflection on my role as their coach. Even though they are my players for only one or two seasons, my time with them has left an indelible mark on them as softball players and young women. These parents here tonight can tell you, I say it every night when I have a meet-the-coaches night, I will treat every one of their daughters like I treat my own son, and I am willing to bet by a show of hands, they'll all tell you, "He did." That's character, and that's integrity. A great example of the mark you leave on somebody is a former player of mine, Ms. Margaret Gilroy. You may have heard of her. She actually is in the United States Naval Academy right now. She's actually one of five women who was deployed onto a submarine, all time, not just now. She cut her trip to Ireland short in June so she could speak at my middle school banquet. Let me repeat, she left her naval academy position early, had to get permission to speak at her middle school softball coaches banquet. I'd say that's leaving a pretty strong mark on a young woman. If I am all the things Mr. Scarpello and Dr. Tribolski say I am, then I ask you, why? Why would all these parents, players, both past and present, and colleagues come week after week, taking time away from their families and their personal lives, to support me if they thought I was not providing something valuable? Why would they do this? Doesn't something not make sense to you here? You have accepted the opinion of one man. You have read his accounts of the situations that have occurred, but you see them with tunnel vision. I'm asking you to remove the blinders and see the bigger picture. I want to know why Mr. Scarpello is receiving such backing and your full support, Dr. Schiff. Why isn't Dr. Tribolski, Mr. Chicarone, the former athletic director, who have been so pleased with me and the program all these years, standing up and not supporting me? It doesn't make sense. There seems to be something else driving the matter. Something else is going on here. I'd just like to know what it is. These parents and my players, I think they'd like to know, too. At this time, Mr. Coffino, I think, has a few words he'd like to come up and say.
Once again, my name is George Coffino. I've spoken before you the last four or five meetings. I guess you could say I'm the instigator of all this. The reason that I am up here tonight, speaking on Coach Rosenbloom's behalf, is my daughter is one of the returning eighth graders now that played for Coach Rosenbloom last year. So, in all honesty, I do have some skin in the game, unlike most of the folks here. I've seen the effect that Coach Rosenbloom has had on my daughter, and it's been very positive. This from a twenty-five-year high school varsity baseball, football, and softball coach. So, I know of what I speak. My daughter pulled together a contingent, was part of a contingent, of returning players who asked on several occasions to meet with Dr. Tribolski to understand why their coach was not being rehired, and on several occasions, the meetings didn't take place. My daughter informed me of that and asked me to come along when a meeting was actually scheduled and to join the meeting, because, as you can imagine, five eighth-grade girls asking to meet with the principal of their school to talk about something they really don't understand could be very intimidating. And my daughter asked me to join that meeting, and I did. However, I was not allowed to join the girls in Dr. Tribolski's office for that particular meeting. So, all I have is the account of what the girls told me when they walked out of there. Dr. Tribolski did allow me a few minutes afterwards, he and I alone, and I just, quite frankly, was, as Rich has said, confused as to why someone of Rich's character that I have witnessed personally in integrity would be removed from a position. I'm relatively new to the Hillsborough area. I relocated from California two years ago, so I don't have the history that all these folks have. However, I do consider myself an astute judge of character. I have been in the coaching profession, played professional baseball. I have been around coaches all my life. So, what I say, I don't say without much thought and without any kind of prejudice here. Rich is one of the most inspiring coaches that I've come across, and it's not easy to coach middle school girls. Currently, I coach a middle-school-age travel softball program. We won the state championship last year with a group of fourteen and under girls, so these are seventh, eighth, and ninth-grade girls. They're not easy to coach, but I wouldn't trade what I'm doing with them now compared to the twenty-five years that I've coached other varsity athletes. The fact that Dr. Tribolski could not eloquently relay to me at that meeting the direction of the program and of the program, and he actually referred me to Mr. Scarpello, who, to this point, four months later, I've not heard from, leaves me wondering and confused, just as Coach Rosenbloom is asking for an explanation right now. So, once again, as I've said on other occasions, speaking before this board, I fully believe that there's more afoot here, as other parents have said and alluded to. I urge you to reconsider how this is being handled. I don't think that 75-plus former players and parents were actually looking forward to being out here on a Monday night with the weather to show support for Rich. So, if that alone doesn't speak for reconsidering what's going on here, I don't know what would be able to convince you. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cofino. Now, it's my understanding that Mr. Scarpello has said he wants to go in a new direction, but what is this new direction? If Mr. Scarpello and Dr. Trabowski want new leadership in a softball program, and a new softball program, why discredit me, my policies, my procedures, and go to such great lengths and extremes on my evaluation? Why challenge my character and integrity in an effort to introduce something or someone new? Does that show integrity? I'm sorry, but this practice, it's hurtful and it's disrespectful. Former student athlete Donna Conrad spoke to you of how I always placed a quote up on the wall for my girls to read before every game. I've always taught the girls the game of softball, but more importantly while doing that, I wanted to mold these girls into young women to become more prepared for the game of life. You see, what goes on outside these four walls, nothing we can do to prepare them for it. That's what I wanted to get them ready for. And with the plethora of young ladies who are at Lehigh, Utah, in the Naval Academy, that continue to come back to me and say, "I remember. Thank you very much." That's the goal I was looking to do. Einstein once said, "Don't try to become a man of success, try to become a man of value." I want to share something with you that was sent to me in the mail. My role model, honest, loyal, determined, and hard-working, are all words that describe this person. "We're never going to give up, not even if we're playing the Yankees," he always said before a game. This person wanted me to become a better person that is respected at whatever I accomplish. As a little kid, I didn't think much about being respected or even helping someone to become better. This person is the sort of person that doesn't take "I don't know" or "I can't" for an answer. Growing up around people respecting this person all the time made me want to be like him. He's a middle school coach in Hillsborough. He has coached for nine seasons. His teams are always one of the elite programs. After winning the division championship the past year, the school has decided to remove him as a coach. Many former players and parents came out to speak on his behalf, wondering, "How could they do this?" That type of respect made me look at things in a former perspective and think, "That's the type of man I want to be when I'm older." After seeing this, it made me appreciate what my dad is not only teaching me, but the values he is teaching others. I am grateful for a father with the type of character he has. I hope to be just like him and help others along the way. No matter what happens, I already know he's the greatest father, but I also know he's an even better person for all the families he has brought into our family. Thank you. That letter came from my son's middle school teacher. Unsolicited, I guess timing is everything. "I do want to thank you all for listening and taking the time to hear me tonight. I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I hope you received and heard over the last several weeks that you'll consider reinstating me as a Hillsborough Middle School softball coach. I respectfully await your decision, since in the next few weeks, like seasons past, I start preparing now for March." I offer you to ask me any questions at this time, however, I know you had mentioned it's not, so I would like to bring up Al Savarino. He has something he'd like to say before I close out.
Hi. My name's Al Savarino, and I too have spoken quite a few times here amongst everybody, in front of everybody, on Coach Rich's behalf. And, you know, one thing that struck me, as I sat here and I listened to very passionate players, parents, coaches, there was this concern about having a public forum, and concern about opening up what this big secret was as to why Coach Rich is no longer, at this point, being considered the coach. And what I found really interesting was, and Dr. Schiff, with all due respect, it was a six-sentence paragraph, basically what my perception was, is something that was checked off in a box, and I decided to support that. Me personally, I think we could do a better job than that as a board, as a superintendent, where we really take the time to understand what this is about, why we have this much passion. I borderline find that insulting, that I've spent this much time here, we've spent that much time here, and this is what the board comes back to us with, six sentences. He doesn't get along with people within the administration. I guess I was hoping to truly understand this, and I was hoping that the board and Dr. Schiff would take the time to really understand what had transpired here. But hopefully, after, again, the very passionate speeches from different parents and from Coach himself, that there's an understanding of how important this is to us. I too have been around sports my whole life, played it all throughout grade school, high school, college. I think some of the most influential people in my life were past coaches. Things that they've said, those indelible memories that I have, the journey that we had, really defined who I am as a person today, in business, as a father, as a person, as a member of the community. And I think when you have the opportunity to have somebody like Coach Rich, who has given so much, so selfishly, and has done just such an incredible job for the many people that he's touched, I think it's an absolute atrocity that we sit here today and we question that. It really makes me doubt the decision-making process within our system, that we can sit here and have something, I mean, this man should be thanked. This man should be rewarded. And here he is, defending his job and his integrity based off of six sentences. I really find that unbelievable. So, I guess what I'm asking is, we heard from the attorney today, the board's attorney, who basically said there was an opportunity for the board members to take a vote. And hopefully, the board members will understand that you have parents that are committed to this community, committed to this school system, who are very much interested in Coach Rich retaining his position. We're going to ask that you take that vote, and that you have the substantive information that you were looking for, that we've been talking about now for over a month. If there's any reason as to why you don't feel otherwise, I certainly haven't seen that tonight. I see nothing that substantiated from Dr. Schiff's point of view as to why this should not, or why Coach should not retain his position. So, like I said, very much, we'd like to see the opportunity for people to represent our community, represent the coach, represent the voices and the past athletes, and reinstate Coach in his position. I don't know if anybody else would like to speak on Coach's behalf, players, this would be your last opportunity, but I know there's a lot of new board members here tonight too. There's faces that I do not recognize that have not been here. I could tell you that tonight was a glimpse, was a microcosm of what's been happening the last six weeks. So, you saw basically, you know, the 32nd infomercial of what people have really been trying to communicate for a very long time. So, Anthony?
Good evening. My name's Anthony Leonie, 910 River Road, Hillsborough. I've just been hearing the word integrity, so if I could say one thing to the board. I have two daughters that went through Mr. Rosenbloom's system, and my youngest suffers from epilepsy N. I just want to say that Mr. Rosenbloom went out of his way to give my wife and I a personal phone call to ensure us both that he's fully trained and could handle anything that could happen on or off the field, in case my daughter ever had a seizure. And when I hear stories about whether kids were left behind, I could just assure you that my wife and I felt, and my daughters, 100% comfortable with Coach Rosenbloom at every single moment. So, again, board, I just hope you take that into consideration. And one quick, being a school teacher myself for 13 years, I'm curious, I've always seen Rosenbloom always there with the students, but watching my daughters go through the school system, I wonder what the board's policy is of pickup, because I've seen students, whether it's staying after school for extra help, music, sports, I've always seen kids go right out to the car without any supervision. I have witnessed Rosenbloom every single time, every time I did. So, I would just ask the superintendent of schools, what is the board's policy or the school's policy in regards of kid supervision? That's all, watching my kids go through the system. Thank you.
You know, obviously, I'm going to pass this back to Coach Rich, but I do want to thank everybody for the time that they've given us. There's been a lot of time on your minutes devoted to this, and that's very much greatly appreciated. And I really do appreciate the fact that when we were here last time, there was mention, and very passionate mention, that, you know what, we do take this serious, and we do listen to this, and I appreciate that very much. So, with that, I guess my last question is, and it's just one question, if there is an opportunity to make a motion, would that happen tonight? Could that happen tonight?
Yeah. So, in the regular meeting, which will start at 7:30, when we get to the action agenda, we go through the human resources agenda. I will ask for a motion to rescind, to reinstate Mr. Rosenbloom as the girl softball middle school coach. It would require a board member to make that motion. It would require a second.
Okay.
And then, there would be a vote.
A majority vote?
It requires, since it's an employment issue, it requires a majority of the full board, which is five, it needs five positive votes.
Okay.
If nobody makes a motion, there's no vote. If somebody doesn't make a second, then there's no vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Let's hope we will get there.
We'll have that.
Lastly, Dr. Schiff, you started by saying, to some extent, partially, majority, the reason is he doesn't get along with administration. I fully respect everything you do. Your job is not easy, but I am sure there are people that maybe necessarily you don't like or get along with, but do their job. We are not in a position to get rid of people just because you don't like them. If an employee is doing their job, there are other ways to handle it. When I was asked and told by Dr. Trabowski and Mr. Scarpello, I immediately, immediately changed and abided to everything was asked of me. I don't see how that could be insubordinate when that occurs, but I do appreciate your time tonight, because I know you've got a lot on your plate. I also want to thank every one of you here tonight for all your time, efforts, for coming out, supporting me, sending me countless emails, as well as the correspondence to the board. Thank you once again to all the board members for your time. Board President, Mr. Kins. Dr. Schiff, thank you. I hope you all have a great evening. I appreciate your time. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. I was checking with Mr. Lapira. Every board meeting that's in the public requires a section on public comment, so we've already had some that was at Mr. Rosenbloom's request, so we'll have that now if there are people who want to add to the commentary that's been there. Okay. From a process perspective, I just want to see what the next steps are.
Right.
So, are we, we're going to close, we're going to close the special meeting and then open up, or reconvene at 7:30?
Reconvene at 7:30. So, you call for adjournment.
Okay. All right. So, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Sub move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Dana. And Judy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're now closing the special meeting, and we will reconvene at 7:30 with the regular meeting. So, thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, and thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting for the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. Today is December 9th, 2013. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 5th, 2013, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. I have a roll call, please, Mr. Bauman.
Shirley, Ms. Bogaszewski?
Yes.
Here. Ms. Tefante?
Here.
Mrs. Hopps?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We're now in order. Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've received correspondence, as is noted in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. It's my pleasure to spotlight our Hillsborough High School math team, who is here tonight with us, with their advisor, and his name is Stephen Raff. Principal Karen Bingard is here to introduce the team. We are very happy to have you here tonight. Ms. Bingard.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd ask Ms. Raff and the math team to come up here and join me. Students, just line up to my right, along with Mr. Raff. In the preface to his work, "How to Solve It," George Polya stated, "A great discovery solves a great problem, but there is a grain of discovery in the solution of any problem. Your problem may be modest, but if it challenges your curiosity and brings into play your inventive faculties, and if you solve it by your own means, you may experience the tension and enjoy the triumph of discovery. Such experiences at a susceptible age may create a taste for mental work and leave their imprint on mind and character for a lifetime." These words are the perfect validation for the existence of the HHS Math League and Math Team. Led by advisor and HHS math teacher, Mr. Stephen Raff, our students participate each month in the highly competitive Central Jersey Math League, otherwise known as the CJML, which consists of 18 area high schools. This year, our students have performed very well in the CJML to date. Here are the results from the first three meets of the year. September 18th, they competed at Matutian High School, where they earned third place after Bridgewater-Raritan High School and Montgomery High School. On October 16th, they competed at South Plainsburg, sorry, at South Plainfield High School, where they earned second place after Middlesex County Academy for Science and Mathematics. And on November 13th, they competed at Union County Magnet High School, where they won first place with perfect scores of 10 from three of our students, junior Trisha Dada, senior Bertha Wang, and senior Christopher Zhang. Would those three noteworthy students please step forward and be recognized? Please wave. At the end of the CJML season in May, the top-performing students are invited to participate in the American Regional Math League, also known as ARMOL. This is a hugely popular and exciting competition, held simultaneously over a weekend in different regions of the country. Our region meets on the Penn State campus in State College, Pennsylvania. Last year, HHS had six students qualify and participate in ARMOL. On Saturday, November 16th, Mr. Raff took a team of eight of our top math team students to participate in the Princeton University Math Competition on Princeton University's campus. It was a very full day of competition and fun activities. This was an invitational event in which we have not participated previously. This was an invitational event in which we have not participated previously. HHS participated in the B Division for Individual High Schools. The A Division is for elite teams representing regions, such as all public high schools in New York City. There were seventy-five teams participating, including ten international teams from China and Eastern Europe. The competition included a very challenging power round, completed during the week before the contest, two individual rounds, and a team collaborative round. The HHS team, as usual, performed extremely well. In its division, they earned ninth place overall. Other top-ten schools were well-known prep schools and several of the international schools. We took sixth place in the power round, and Christopher Zhang took top-ten honors in his two individual rounds. Our students also participate in the monthly New Jersey Math League, NJML, a less competitive event open to all students, and the prestigious annual AMC-10 and AMC-12 national competitions in February. This fall, many of our students enjoyed participating in the pilot season of a new online competition called Math Madness, sponsored by the American Mathematics Association. Over one hundred students will participate in various math team events during the school year. The students listed below, however, are members of the travel team, who will participate in the most competitive events. As I mentioned names of any of the students who were able to be with us tonight, I ask that you just step forward and wave and smile for the camera. Members of the travel team, Neil Chata, Arvind Chandaka, Chris Chaya, Trisha Data, David Han, Sarah Jaffray, Andrew John, Evan Kaplan, Harry Lee, Alan Liu, Garanchu Sharma, Bertha Wang, Burton Wang, and Christopher Zhang, who is the captain. Mr. Raff would like to thank his colleagues who challenged these students in their math classes and helped to develop their critical problem-solving skills. He also wishes to thank district math supervisor, Ms. Tracy Nurr, the HHS administration, and the Board of Education for supporting the program. Most of all, he wishes to thank the parents for sending us these wonderfully talented students. It is a privilege to work with them. As the proud and very impressed principal of Hillsborough High School, I would also like to thank Mr. Raff, whose devotion to the program and to his students is certainly a key to this team's continued success, and, more importantly, to what is sure to be their lifelong love of mathematics. Ladies and gentlemen, the HHS Math Team.
Very impressive work. You certainly make our high school proud, as well as our district. Outstanding job. Another big round of applause for the Hillsborough High School Math Team.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Raff and the team. Great job. I do want to turn, before I share some good news, to thank our maintenance team, Mr. Mahmood in particular, as well as Larry Bullock, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Deborah Espinoza, our Director of Transportation, who were up at 3:30 this morning looking at the weather charts. And their work helped us to make a well-informed decision about delaying the school opening this morning. We are unfortunately expecting some additional weather tomorrow, so we'll be watching that very carefully as well. Now, some great news that I'd like to share with the Board, as well as with the community. This year's Hoops for Heart event at Autton Road Intermediate School was a huge success. Students and staff raised an incredible $20,000 for the American Heart Association. In addition to raising funds for worthwhile cause, students spent the week focusing on fitness activities and learning the importance of physical activity and creating a healthy lifestyle. Proceeds from this event will help fund research and educational programs to increase awareness and prevention of heart disease and stroke. Congratulations to this year's Hoop for Heart team for the success of this year's fundraising event. In typical form, the Hillsborough High School Theater Group put on an amazing, amazingly moving and powerful production of Ken Keasley's "One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest" on November 22nd and 23rd. Under the leadership of producer BJ Solomon, all students involved, from those on the stage and those in the back of the house, did an amazing job bringing this unforgettable story to life. Thank you to all of those who shared their talents in this production. Let's give Autton Road School, as well as the Theater Group at Hillsborough High School, a big round of applause. That's the superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to open the floor up to public comment. We'll do this for both new business and also for the action agenda. Okay, seen none. Now, I'd like to, I'm gonna move, switch two things, the agenda between the committee reports and the public input on the 2014-15 budget. So, actually, I'd like to open it up now for the public comment on the 2014-2015 budget.
Are we going to approve minutes?
And I've skipped that one, so we'll do that after. We'll do that after public comment. Any comment on the budget for the 2014-15? Okay. Thank you for keeping me in line. We'll now like to entertain a motion to approve the November 18th, 2013 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dana. Okay, all in favor? Or any discussion first? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. The minutes are approved. Okay, now for committee reports. There is no committee reports, because they were happening later, and we had that at the last meeting. Okay, thanks. All right, now, we're going to move to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB investigation list, the family and, I'm sorry, approve the family science sessions as listed, approve the National History Day stipends, the fourth-grade world language exploration program stipends, out-of-district placements as listed, out-of-district placement transfers, and that's all.
On behalf of the Education Committee, I ask the full Board to approve items A1 through A7.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mrs. Haley?
Can we separate out A5, please?
Yep. Okay, any other discussion for Mrs. Hoss?
I would just like an informational question. In A6, are those tuition figures the prorated figure or the annual figure?
Those are annual, I believe, and they need to be prorated.
Look a little low.
They do, some of them, but no. Mr. Mahmood?
I'm not sure, Dr. Schiff. We'd have to take a look and check. I'm not sure. Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so this is, Mr. Pulsifer?
We really don't have much to say about them anyway, right? I mean, these are, these are IEP-directed placements, so we're gonna, I mean, it would be nice to make sure we know what the numbers are, but they're not something we would not approve just because of the number, because it's IEP-directed.
We have historically put on the annual tuition rate and then included the term prorated if it's not for the beginning of the school year. However, Mrs. Hoss is correct that some of the tuition can actually exceed that amount.
Okay. Okay. So, we're gonna vote on items A1 through A4 and A6 to A7. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A5 of the action agenda.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Okay. I'd like to provide more information to the Board and to the public. Item A5 is about approving two-week sessions for fourth-grade students to be exposed to French, Italian, and German. And we had a lot of discussion at the previous board meeting on this idea, and I wanted to give everyone a little background before we vote on this. So, what had happened was, we implemented K through 4 Chinese and Spanish. And then, the students, before they go into fifth grade, are asked to choose from among five languages. And last year, before they did that, we gave them, well, actually not, but the district provided an informational night, one night, to, so that the students could learn about Italian, French, and German, and then proceed to make their decisions. Within the Board, several members of the Board, as well as parents in the district, said that that was not enough exposure for the students to make a choice. So, the Education Committee then asked Mr. Enrique Pinque, who is the world language supervisor, to consider additional ideas to give exposure to the students. So, he went back to the French, Italian, and German teachers, and they came up with the idea of a two-week session. So, it would be ten days after school. And they then did a survey of fourth-grade families to see if there was any interest. At the last meeting, Dr. Wasson asked if we had any information as to how many people would be interested in this program. So, I followed up for her, and I'm happy to report that there were forty-two students or families interested in German. And so, when we talk about the number of students, on average, you would have twenty students per class, or per, yeah, so that it would be manageable for the teacher. So, we would like to report to you the level of interest in our district. We had a survey, twenty percent of the class responded. And the breakdown is that there are forty-two families interested in German, sixty-eight interested in Italian, and eighty interested in French. So, while we had discussed before that it would be one, two-week session for each of the languages, it's actually, the interest is higher than that. So, it would depend on the number of students who eventually register. But what you have for tonight's vote is the maximum that we would pay for this program. So, that's based on the data that I'm giving you today. And does anyone have any other questions?
If I could just make a further clarification, I also checked in to this as well. Those numbers are out of the one-hundred-and-six respondents, so eighty of those one-hundred-and-six respondents said that they were interested in French. Sixty-eight in Italian. So, I mean, of the twenty percent, that, so we don't really know how many people would register. That could be a greater number. But I also spoke today to Dr. Intunis and Mr. Pinque, and asked specifically about how registration would be done, because what I don't want is to have this maximum of four classes per area, per language. And then, we allow parents to choose among four different sessions, and we end up with only five or six per session. And Mr. Pinque had said that, and Dr. Intunis agreed, that this would be done very similarly to summer enrichment, so that they would open a class, roll out registration until it was capped, open a second class, and so forth. So, that would be how we would make sure that we would have filled classes and not go over budget on anything. I also asked the question about, this would be run from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m.? It looks like that is the most popular time slot that was offered during the survey. What about the students who might be interested in this, who were not able to make that because their parents couldn't get them there, no transportation would be provided? And Mr. Pinque was open to and felt that the teachers would, of course, be open to holding a session like we held last year in the evening. However, nobody felt that, as you said, that that was quite enough in terms of the teachers having a real opportunity to introduce the language to the students. They really just spoke to why they loved it, and the student, and we also had high school students there who were in National Honor Society and spoke very similarly, but it wasn't really exposure to the language as much as it was. This is why I like it. So, just wanted to supply that additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Well, just to clarify, because there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, so we want to reiterate that the Education Committee strongly recommends that it is the French, Italian, and German teachers who teach these classes, because they have the most passion for it and interest. They enjoy their languages, and that would be shown to the students who come to the class, so we want to give them a good experience.
Okay, since this is a vote that has to do with stipends, it requires a full majority, so we need five positive votes. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, continuing on with the action agenda?
Yes, I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to approve the retirements of Linda Herr, who has worked with us since 1998, as well as Mary Ann Jones, French and German teacher, who has been, who has been with us since September 1 of 1994, Kathleen Robinson, art teacher, who has served the district since February 28th of 2000, and Mary Ann Zworko, who has been with us since September 1 of 1983. We thank them for their service to our school district and our community. To approve also the resignations as listed, the revised leaves of absence, the revised long-term substitutes, rescinding of contracts, contract changes, transfer and changes in assignments, leaves of absence, and to approve the appointments of the interim principal, disability and LDTC, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, transportation aides, coaches, co-curricular advisors, mentors, substitutes, extra-period coverage, revised transportation aid hours, approval of summer enrichment stipends for 2014.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B12 of the action agenda.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the Board approve items B1 through B12 as listed in this evening's agenda.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? Mrs. Haley?
Sorry, can we separate out B8.1 and, hold on, B8.6.2?
B8.6.2, okay.
B1? B8.1 and B8.6.2.
Okay, any other? Just a real quick question. I don't know if you are able to answer it. I noticed in some of the co-curricular advisors that there was not enough interest in the printmaking club and the garden club, as was suggested or provided as an alternative. Do we have confidence that that, that there's going to be enough interest in those, in that, in that group?
According to Karen Bingard.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, this is for items B1 through B12 excluding B8.1 and B8.6.2. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B8.1 of the action agenda. Okay, sorry. And a second?
Chris and Cleon?
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Oh, hold on a second. Mrs. Hoss?
I would like to say something.
Yep.
You know, I'm sure it comes, that's no surprise to anybody, that I'm concerned about interim hires. The Amsterdam School Building definitely needs a leader in the absence- The Amsterdam School Building definitely needs a leader in the absence of Dr. Malady, and Mr. Hal Blackstone is a lovely, lovely man. However, I continue to be concerned about the salaries that we pay to interim administrators. I do not think the standard needs to be the same salary as the person that they are replacing. I do not think that any substitute is fully worth the value of the incumbent. And quite honestly, in the teacher universe, a starting teacher makes about $270 a day, and we pay our substitutes $90 a day. And those are the people that we allow behind a closed door with our children. As far as administrators go, I think that a reasonable standard might be the lowest-paid, oh, and for long-term substitutes, we do first-year teacher lowest end of the scale. So, I think that could be a standard for administrative replacements, and I really would like this looked into. I really don't agree with the standard of the salary of the person vacating the position.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
May I just make a quick question? Yep. I appreciate Mrs. Haas's concern. My suggestion would be that we have conversations in, at the next HR committee agenda about establishing particular protocols for interims. However, I do ask that we move this today, he's ready to start tomorrow, and then we can, we can establish a predictable procedure to address it moving forward. And I don't know what that procedure would be, I think it's something that would need to be discussed through the HR committee and then recommended to the full board. So, that is my suggestion for.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, Mrs. Haas.
Are we offering the salary, or are these the salaries that are being demanded?
We are offering these salaries, but it is, it is based upon past practice that I've had in other districts that I've worked in, and in this district, when we've had interims before. We can change that moving forward, certainly, and if it's the will of the, of the HR committee and the will of the full board, then we can certainly do that.
Okay. Mrs. Ley?
This is very interesting. I think that if, if we, if our district sets our own precedence, that's not a bad idea regarding salaries. It's just that Mr. Blackstone, when he did substitute for the Woods Road School Principal, he brought stability into the school. So, I do, I do understand the need for an interim principal, and I, and I would encourage looking into questioning the daily rates.
Okay. We'll direct that to the HR committee.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we can, we will certainly look into that. I think it's appropriate, if nothing else, that it shouldn't matter which school you're at, and therefore, what you make because of who happens to be the principal at that school, in terms of having an interim. I do believe that, and I don't mean this in any way against our substitute teachers, but when we look at what we ask an interim administrator to do, and what they're expected to do based on their professional qualifications as an administrator, that typically in most other business areas, if you brought in an expert on a short term, you pay more, not less. And that's kind of what we're looking at here. With this year's, you know, starting this year with the increased load based on the state law in terms of evaluations and everything else that's going on, you know, Mr. Blackstone is actually stepping into potentially quite a, quite a lot of work as an interim, and I think that needs to be compensated as such, notwithstanding the range of salaries across our different schools. And I think that's really why we need to address it, that we don't have a standard there.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Mrs. Haas?
I'll just give it one last go, right? Yeah, I think I opened my comments by saying I have the utmost respect for Mr. Blackstone, and I do recognize the need for the Amsterdam School Building to have one administrator in it. However, with all due respect to everybody, Mr. Blackstone retired in 2007, and has not been part of our technological revolution, and has not been trained in strong teacher evaluations. So, yes, you're hiring expertise, but it's not there necessarily. He's a wonderful man, he's a wonderful leader, everybody loves him, it'll work out, I'm prepared to support it. But I'm not prepared to continue to support salaries that I don't think are appropriate. And I think with the compromise of having your committee look at a structure going forward, I would be prepared to support.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Ms. Sepafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mrs. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B-8.6.2. So moved. And a second?
Please.
Thank you. Mrs. Ley? Mr. Pulsifer? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Sepafante?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Epstein.
Mrs. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Motion passes. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to reinstate Richard Rosenbloom to the middle school girls softball coach position for 2013, 2014.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mrs. Ley and Mr.?
Do you want to talk about?
As much as we can.
No, no, I, well, never mind.
Mr. Pulsifer?
As a board member, I think, and I'm glad Vic's here, he can confirm this for me, our role in this decision is not to say whether or not we want Mr. Rosenbloom as our softball coach, whether Mr. Rosenbloom is a better coach than other coaches, or whether the policies that he does or does not have for his team are up for us to debate. Our job is to consider the process and the procedures that the administration went through, and as a board, it, well, it is the superintendent's job to make the decision of who to hire or not to hire. It is our job only to make sure that there was a process and it was followed. We don't, as board members, we don't get to say, "But I really think so-and-so should be the coach." It's up to the superintendent and his administration to make that decision, and our only job is to decide whether or not there was a, an issue in terms of how that was taken care of. If we don't see an issue, we should be supporting the superintendent in doing his job.
Okay. Mrs. Ley?
Yes, thank you. I, I actually approached the issue in terms of process, so that was a good segue into what I'm going to say. And I, I also, I agree that the board should not interfere with hiring practices. But where we weigh in is in terms of the process. And I come from industry, so when, when there is an issue, we, we evaluate performance, which occurred, and then there were certain issues that were raised. I don't, you know, what I heard tonight was that there was some agreement to the issues that were raised, and there was miscommunication or some misunderstanding about resolution of it. In industry, we have action plans and we have remediation, and then, and then something occurs. So, my concern is that certain steps were, if they had been intended to take place, it wasn't even clear, you know, to the people involved. So, on that basis, I would like to see improvement in our district regarding how to remediate, how to have action plans. And this is a healthy discussion for school districts, because sports is very important in growing up, it's part of our culture. Coaches are very motivational to students, and they need to stay within the school district policies. So, there may have been miscommunication on that, and I just, it is baffling to me as a board member, so I have those concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ley. Mrs. Haley?
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Pulsifer said, as far as process, it kind of stinks, because it shouldn't be drop-dead-do-or-die, we have to make a decision right after a public meeting if board members still have questions about things. So, I think as far as the process is concerned, not sure exactly how that changes. If that's a state issue, I, I don't know. So, but as a board member, if you hear something that you're not comfortable with, you're allowed to vote on it. We're here to represent the public.
Dr. Swanson?
I appreciate very much what Chris said, and I want to make it clear, I don't want to run the school, I don't, I am not making the motion because I particularly want Mr. Rosenbloom as the coach, or I like him, although my kids had him for Jim and said he's a great guy. And I believe what the parents say, that it has a very positive impact on the girls. I think our role here is determined, to determine whether there was an issue with process, and I found an issue, frankly, with process. I mean, I, I feel like, unfortunately, we've had several of these race meetings over the past year, they're always difficult, but I feel like our job is to determine whether the burden of proof, you know, is met, and I didn't find that here. So, I feel like I was disappointed in the presentation, we had documentation that stated some other things that was not brought out to the public. Mr. Rosenbloom gave up his right to privacy here, and I felt like if we were going to defend a decision, then the public had the right to know the whole story. That made me question the process more. So, you know, I just wanted to explain why I went through with the motion. I do believe that we could improve in this area, and I would have liked to have seen Mr. Scarpello here, Dr. Trabowski, and heard from them as well. And so, that, I felt.
So, real quick to add to that, actually, the process is what it is, and it is frustrating, and I share that. But with the special meeting that we had, the format of the meeting was that Mr. Rosenbloom was able to present information to the board. We did not have the opportunity, it's not, it was not, it's not an adversarial scenario, which, so we don't have the, we did not have the opportunity to ask questions about reasons for removal, or, or to challenge him on the presentation and the testimony that he brought, the people who represented him. And I also do want to, I also do want to acknowledge that this is, and recognize that this is for an at-will stipended position, it is not for a teaching position, whether that person is tenured or non-tenured, it is for an at-will stipended position.
I'd like to second what my colleagues have said prior to what, what I'm about to say. I am concerned about the procedure here, and given the fact that we can't ask questions and we can't speak to certain other people, we're left making certain assumptions, which are always dangerous, but here's one of mine. The man has coached for us for nine years. Okay? So, if one year resulted in a troublesome evaluation, may I assume the other eight years did not. The man also teaches for our school for longer than the nine years. I will make certain assumptions by the fact that he earned tenure and is still with us. So, the process leaves a lot to be desired, and I think, as my colleague, Tuyan, mentioned, that there should be room here, given a new athletic director and apparent support from parents and students, to work something out here, and that's what I would support.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Okay. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Can you?
Sure. Okay. So, to make this clear, we are, this is a motion to reinstate Mr. Rosenbloom to the middle school girls softball coach position for 2013, 14. Again, it's an at-will, it's a yearly appointment at stipended position. Since this is a, since this is a position issue, it requires a majority of the entire, of the full board, which is five votes in the affirmative. So, a vote yes is to, is to reinstate, basically go against the recommendation for non-renewal and reinstate him to that position. Okay? Any other? Got that clear? Got that right?
Sure.
Um, sorry. I, too, had a really amazing coach, growing up. I no longer reside in Michigan, but my parents do, and they still are in contact with him. I just want to say that I commend all of you for coming up and talking about a coach, because you will forever remember, even if it's one saying, one word, that your coach has told you. I'm sorry that we all can't come together and agree on something, and I'm sorry that the two people that should be here to speak, to let everyone know their side of the story, unfortunately, I mean, I came in today to vote against you. But after listening to everything that I've heard from the parents, and from the players, and from everything that you guys have said, I feel in my heart of hearts that how can I deny the town of somebody who seems to love? Because it is so hard to find that one person who does something so amazing to our town. So, my vote is yes.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Sepafante?
Epstein.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
No.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
No. No. Motion passes.
Continuing on with the action agenda, operations.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motion under the area of operations, to approve the line item transfers, the transportation routes, as listed, transportation addendum, the contracts as listed, to rescind or ward revised transportation contracts, to accept the donations of a Yamaha flute from Gene Boyer, Bayer, and, and a bunch of electrical equipment from the IEEE Electronic Devices Society. We thank them for their donation. Approve the bylaw for first reading for board committees, and rescind the termination of Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield Health and Prescription Drug Plan, to approve Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal rates for the six-month period beginning January one to June thirtieth, and to rescind designation of new health and prescription drug benefit provider.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C-1 through C-10 of the Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C10 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Excuse me.
Mrs. Haley, I'm sorry.
Can we discuss why C9 and C10 are on the agenda?
Um, yes. So, as you know, a number of meetings ago, we had made a motion to move to the state starting February 1. Events would preclude us from being able to do that at that point in time, so in order to do that, to have a sense of continuity and clarity, and we need to have a healthcare provider that will occur from February 1 on. And so this is an option to continue with our current provider. So in order to reverse the action that we had from a number of meetings ago, we have to cancel the resolutions to go into the state starting February 1, and then also cancel or rescind the resolution that we had to terminate our current provider on January 31.
What are those events?
I'm not liberty to say right now.
Actually, we are.
Okay.
I can fill that in. Legally, we can change our provider at any time, as long as the new plan is, and I'm going to use my terms here, and I'm not sure this is legally right, but equal to or better, or substantially equivalent or better, to the plan that we're replacing. We were under the belief that the plan we were going to qualified for that. However, it turns out that there is, part of the plan, as it relates to prescriptions, is not equivalent or substantially equivalent, therefore we cannot legally do that. Normally, if we want, we can negotiate a change in the plan, however, separate from that, again, at any point in time, we could change providers as long as the plan, the new plan meets. We thought we were doing that, and it turns out there is a difference in the plans, it is not substantially equivalent, therefore we cannot, at this time, move into that new plan. So, going back to what Tom said, that means we have to undo and then redo, because that's just the way the motion.
So, for example, a number of years ago, we went to state, went back to, went out from state to private, and both those instances, it was either same as, or same as or better than.
Okay. And can we say what the substantial is or isn't?
The difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, as Chris just mentioned.
There's a, and again, I don't know I have the numbers right, the prescription co-pay for mail order, I believe there was no co-pay, and there is now, would be a 10 percent, 10 percent? 10 percent co-pay. So clearly not equivalent, and therefore we can't do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to have discussion about this here, I believe we're having discussion, but that, to me, is substantially the same. If every other part of the plan is the same, 10 percent co-pay is, nobody on earth gets a zero co-pay on prescriptions.
We understand that private industry, private practice comparables outside of the district is not there, but when you compare what they have currently to a new plan, that's the benchmark that you use.
You're right, the only benchmark is the current plan, regardless of what the medians and averages or whatever else is out there, we have a negotiated level of coverage, a negotiated plan coverage. We are only allowed to change providers so long as we still meet that negotiated level of coverage, which happened to be no co-pay. So regardless of what else might be out there, we can't change plans without negotiation unless it meets that criteria. For some, 10 percent co-pay doesn't sound like a lot, but for somebody who has a prescription for a chronic, ongoing, you know, illness that has significant cost, 10 percent could be hundreds of dollars, you know, every quarter. It could easily amount to over $1,000 or much more for some people in a year. So given that, that 10 percent is not equivalent. And again, it's not whether or not it's equivalent to whatever the rest of the world has, it's purely a legal issue of, we have a contract that stipulates a certain level of coverage, and we would not be meeting that contractual obligation if we made the switch at this time.
So, just for clarity, even if the teachers approve the change, we cannot make that change at any time?
If you wanted to go into a sidebar negotiation and have an agreement, that would be one avenue in which you could. That's not the case here.
Right, we did not have an agreement, we just made the switch. Because it was, because we thought it was the same, and financially it was a better position for us. As soon as we realized that it was not the same, we can't do that.
Okay. Hope that's clear. Any other discussion with regard to the action items, C1 through C10? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Miss Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Moving on, this is the, getting towards the end of the meeting where we have public comments, if there is any public comment. Okay, any old business from, oh, we do have old business from the floor.
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road, just a quick question, on the vote to reinstate Mr. Rosenbloom, we couldn't hear the final vote, could it be re?
Sure, there was, we have eight people?
Five, two, one.
Five people, there were five positive, one abstention, and two noes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Informational is, as you see, now there's some items that we'd like to address in the executive closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, is permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association, the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association, SIC bank requests, and superintendent goals. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. When we return from executive session, that's, when we return from, when we return from the executive session, no action will be taken, the only action will be to adjourn the meeting. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
And Twain. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're now going to executive session, and as I mentioned, when we return, the only business we will have will be to adjourn the regular meeting.